All right, let's call the regular village board meeting order. You all rise and say the fledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good. All right, let's call the roll.
Maravka?
Here.
Jones?
Here.
Sluse?
Here.
Parker?
Here.
Ham?
Here.
Fountain?
All right, before we get started, does everybody know that Jerry Wicker passed away over the weekend? And he was a longtime board member, over 15 years, I believe.
Seventeen.
Seventeen years. So just a moment of thanks and gratitude for all he did. He was always willing to volunteer and help out in the village. And we need more people like him here, so he'll be missed. All right, in your packet are the regular board meeting minutes of October 12th. And I want to thank Kent for filling in for me at that meeting. Are there any corrections or additions to those minutes? If not, are you taking a motion to approve those? Motion. Moved by trustee Ham, seconded by trustee Jones.
Ham?
Yes.
Jones?
Yeah.
Maravka?
Yes.
Sluse?
Yes.
Parker?
Next is accounts payable and payroll. The payroll pay period ending 10/3, 20 for $47,119.58. Accounts payable, general funds $62,132.77. Motor fuel tax fund $12,156.44 for a total of $74,296.21. Are there any questions or comments on the bills?
Taylor Ford, what do we... How many?
That was very fair to the trucker, Public Works Department.
And then the comm ed bill, kind of big to me, but is $5,300, is that?
That's streetlights.
That's all the streetlights.
It's difficult.
Yeah. All right.
Any other questions on the bills? If not, are you taking a motion to approve the bills?
I'll motion it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by trustee Maravka, seconded by trustee Parker.
Maravka?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Sluse?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes. All right, public comment and other questions. Do we have Aqua on the line?
We have several callers on the line. I'm assuming that they're Aqua.
Okay. Tracy, are you there?
Yes, Tracy, here.
Can you give us an update on your Aqua projects, please?
Not much to update this week. Corning Avenue continuing to move forward. We will be out of the IDOT project area tomorrow. We have ran into a couple of items just with some mains that we didn't... water mains that we didn't know were there. So specifically on Third Street, it looks like there's an additional six-inch main paralleling a four-inch main that we need to address and get shut off or passed or something. So we're looking at that overnight and tomorrow, but it is out of the IDOT project area. We have not heard anything from the railroad. Starting to be disappointing as we're heading into November, you know, depending on timing. And when they give us the approval, we may want to consider pushing it back due to restoration work or just getting the restoration work done in the spring. So we'll keep you updated. I know that you guys have reached out. You haven't heard anything either, so it really is their mercy. Everything else continues to move along smoothly, working with the concrete guys from the IDOT project. No confirms, no issues. I believe they're starting to show up for the actual paving part. But that's really all I've got on the Corning Ave. Urban section, FEES has been on site. They have begun working as per always. They run into a few smaller issues just with sizing of doors being different than what's on the plan, but that's expected. So nothing major there. No updates on the chemical loop. We're continuing to test and run the pipe rig and full beta to review. So that's really the updates that we've got. Has anybody got questions for me?
So are your hookups on the FEES side going to be done, you said, tomorrow? Or they're already done?
Yes. We will be done and out of the IDOT project tomorrow. There are still three or four services that will need to be switched over, but those are in between Third and West towards the railroad.
Okay. And so if you can't go under the railroad before winter hits, then you guys are going to pave or at least patch the areas in that between Third and railroad, right?
Yeah, we won't leave anything open or closed aggregate over the winter.
Okay.
We'll do a full patch if we need to. That's already been communicated to our contractor and construction coordinators.
All right, any other questions for the board?
I had a couple neighbors complain of heavy chlorine odor in the mornings. I just don't know bring it up and what the reason might be or...
So did you hear that one of the board members, they had some neighbors complaining of a heavy chlorine odor in their water? Any idea what that would be from or how should we address that?
I wasn't aware of anything. Let me talk with distribution. I'm not aware of any changes that we've made, so I can't answer why they would have that.
So this would be... This is in the area of kind of West Street and Southerner, correct? Mike or... Yes. So this would be around West Street and Southerner, that area there.
Okay. So that's... And those are Corning Avenue residents?
No, no, this is kind of a separate issue.
I got you, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Okay, let me look into that and I will communicate. I'll send Amy a response tomorrow.
Perfect.
When I find out.
Any other questions?
Yeah, a question.
Yes.
Tracy, this is Troy Goleman, the engineer. I know you guys are hiring Iroquois to do the patching for the water main trench. Do you know when that's going to happen?
Um, I would have to check with them. I do not know.
Okay, just wondering because I know that has to happen before they do the... I don't know if that's happened before the milling, but obviously before the paving. And we just want to keep that going.
Yeah, sure. I'll find that out too tomorrow, Troy.
Okay.
And I'll make sure that you're copied on that.
Thank you.
All right, anything else?
Yeah, Mayor, this is Angie.
Hi, Angie.
Hi, how are you?
Good.
I just wanted to say that we will be getting some communication out. I'll be touching base with Amy on an upcoming newsletter. But we do notify customers who has called and split reach. And so we would like to get that out to the community so that they know to give us the most up-to-date phone number, the phone number that they use most frequently, so that if they're off of date, such as void orders or anything like that, we can send them the automated voice message. We've been noticing there's been a couple numbers that are no longer in service and such, but that's just important to keep updated so that because there is so much going on, we can see customers most up to date as well.
All right, sounds good. Anything else?
That's it, Karen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, any other public comments? If not, we'll go to reports, village administrator report.
You've got quite a lengthy report in your packet of mine, so I won't go into much detail. I just wanted to point out that in building permits, we are... we don't have... to date, we're at 408 total building permits issued versus 526 in 2019. But we're ahead year-to-date than we were at our total annual in single-family homes. I mean, we're not, you know, doing tons of single-family homes, but we've exceeded our annual number already year-to-date in single-family homes. Same in miscellaneous permits. We've exceeded pretty significantly year-to-date our number of permits issued for miscellaneous permits than we have issued annually this time, but last year annually. So we just wanted to point that out to you. You'll notice that the Verizon building is getting quite the makeover, so that's got to be really nice to see for everybody since it's been vacant for many, many, many years. So that'll be a bank, it'll be a mortgage. They're just going to... it's not a full-service bank, but it'll be just mortgages and loans at that facility. So if I get more information, I'll give it to you.
Any other questions for the administrator? The one thing, we just got the good news for our CARES grant. We were approved for that total amount, so that $170,000, we're going to get reimbursed for police salaries. And so that will surely help our budget this year. So thanks for, Amy, for getting that all put together and submitting that and with the help of the staff. Police chief report. Nothing? All right, engineer report.
Just an update for the Corning project. The concrete pouring for the sidewalks and the curb and gutter is happening this week. So they're planning on being done Wednesday or Thursday, so the sidewalks will be able to be used, should be by Friday or Saturday for sure for trick-or-treating. As far as the paving, that's why I asked them about the patches to make sure that Aqua, they were ready in, you know, in line to do the patches because we need to do the patches before we can pave, obviously. So I just, you know, they didn't give us an exact schedule for the paving yet. We're hoping it's going to start next week for the milling and the patching at least, and then paving will follow.
So they have to put something down where they dug for the paving?
Yeah, because right now it's a stone, I believe.
Okay.
So they got to patch that with asphalt before we pave.
So a few residents have been commenting that they haven't been able to get in their driveway along there. And I know we had some communication, but it didn't seem like it happened today that they put gravel in between there. I mean, do we have any time scheduled on when?
So it... Yeah, it's... I know our RE, our resident engineer was going to ask them to fill it in if it wasn't there so they can get in.
Yeah. Can you bug somebody and maybe Bob, you can bug him too to do that? Because for some of these residents, it's been like two weeks that they haven't been able to use their driveway.
Yeah. What, is it where the curb is going to be poured?
Well, no, the curb's already poured. It's just a matter of, you know, filling in where they dug it out. You know, it'd just be a simple, you know, putting some gravel in there.
It's the space between the new curb and the old asphalt, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, we'll try to get on them about that first thing tomorrow.
And so that one section of sidewalk where they dug up and they found, what, some old storm? Is that a storm sewer or just some drainage or?
There was a storm sewer and part of it was missing, so it had to be replaced.
Okay, so that's going to be done this week?
I believe that's already done right now. Yeah, so now they should be pouring the sidewalk over it.
They just got to pour.
Yeah. That's what they're going to be doing this week.
Okay. So the sidewalks, we're hoping are be done by trick-or-treating, but again, those spots between where they dug out the asphalt and put in the new curbs, is that going to be filled in with something or... I mean, because there's quite a gap there, you know? You wouldn't want your kid trying to walk there.
In the street or adjacent to the sidewalk area?
So from the sidewalk, you know, to the street, crossing the street, you know what I'm saying? So it's where they dug out to repair the curb, you know, so there's a gap there. I mean, if that's not going to be filled in, then just we need to leave the sidewalk closed barriers up so people don't...
So, well, yeah, we'll try to get any spots that are next to the sidewalks.
Yeah.
By the curb, you know, to get filled in with the rest of the stuff.
Right, I mean, it wouldn't take much to do it. Any other questions for the engineers?
I have an update also for the West Street resurfacing project.
Yes.
From Corning to Joliet. We're moving along pretty far with those plans.
Good.
So we're going to submit that to IDOT early November for their first submittal. And then they have comments, and we do a final submittal, and that's on target for the April letting, which means that project should happen next summer. And the one thing the village has to do is do a quality-based selection for the engineering services because it's federal money. So Amy and I kind of went through that with the last project, so I'll get her all that information the rest of the couple of weeks.
Okay. And anything to report on I-57?
No, there's been definite progress in the plans. We still don't have the cores yet. We still don't have the IDOT permit for those. We're getting closer, we hope. Hopefully it's not a railroad situation like that, but definite progress on the plans, so moving in the right direction.
Great. All right. Any questions for the engineer? All right, moving on, treasurer's report.
So two months of non-doing room for me. You have the treasurer's report. You also have a copy of the annual treasurer's report. This is required by state statute. It'll be in the cadat tomorrow, and then we'll file everything with the county, including the other and everything this week too, so.
Good.
Just to give color again, the treasurer's report was some of the revenue that came in. If you're comparing month over month from year over year, this month was up 12.7% versus last year at the same time. But if you're comparing the six months, first six months of this year to the first six months of last year, we're still down 6.4% or about $55,000. So good, bad, coming out of the hole, but the grant money will be a huge help. I think we'll hit number... I think revenue will probably come in similar to last year, but we're just probably not going to have the gains that we anticipated in some of the categories. But then there's other categories that are outperforming. I mean, the use tax is way up this year, but that's because everyone's not going to the stores to shop. You know, they're not going to buy, they just spend their tax dollars, they're spending them on their computer. We get a portion of that money. So that's to our benefit. Not big dollars, but we're getting something.
Yeah.
So other than that, I mean, if you have any questions for me, but our six-month expenses, you know, we're not over our six-month revenue, so that's a good sign. We're trimming our costs where we can and hoping the revenue comes back, will be in our way.
Good. Any questions for the treasurer? And we do have a budget meeting on Thursday that we're going to start working on, you know, next year's budget. So yeah, we'll keep you guys apprised of that. Okay, I think we left Bob off here. Bob, you got any?
I'm sorry, Bob.
That's okay.
Just a few things. Public Works, new complex, had a final inspection. We did pass, so that process is over. We have full occupancy out there. Moving process has started. Started setting up our shop there. Spray foam is complete. Roll the difference. Stop out and take a look, let me know. Leaf collection has started. I added some pictures to the Facebook page and the website to make it, if residents don't really understand leaf collection, how you should place your leaves, there's some photos on there to help you.
Great. And yeah, I just want to publicly congratulate you and your department and Amy for getting that Public Works building finally approved. I know you guys put in a lot of work with those fence slats and the landscaping and, you know, I really appreciate it. I'm glad we got it done. Now we got to get you moved out there, right?
Yeah, I'm glad. Less than a little bit anyway.
Good.
All right. Good job.
Thank you. Okay, we have no old business, new business amplifier permit for Jim Williams Cornerstone Coffee House. And Mr. Williams is here. Do you want to just give us a brief update, what you'd like to do?
Yeah, sure. I think maybe the term amplifier application is a little... or permit is a little overblown. It's not like we're going to be having a lot of use for anything, but just a local Peetown resident, Tracy DeGraff, she's a comedian, and we want to have a small, you know, we're going to register so we can keep our numbers down below whatever the limit is at that time. But because of the fact that she uses a microphone and a small amplifier, we had to apply for the permit. So I was hoping to have a flyer here that she's made up for us, but I didn't get the right format, so I was going to hand out some flyers that we haven't published yet, but it's just going to be a simple, intimate thing in the shop, which is smaller than this room here, so.
Okay.
If there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer them if I can.
I don't have a question for you. I have a question for the attorney. So do we need an amplifier permit for an indoor event?
That is a good question.
I mean, I always thought the amplifier was just so that you don't bother the neighbors.
Right.
I'd have to look at the...
I don't think so.
You don't think so?
It's only for outside. Bars different. Bars have to have a permit for the inside for amplifier, I mean, for music.
Okay.
But there is no inside the building.
All right. So do the bars need one for inside music, though?
Yeah, they have a music permit.
Okay, so maybe the wording is such that, you know, any amplifier, whether it's music or comedy or whatever, is structured that you need the permit, so. So like, does the Legion get one when they do their comedy shows?
Yes.
All right. That answers it.
They're a tavern, so they need to get one.
Okay. Well, I'd say let's approve this, and then maybe, you know, maybe you can look into it a little further. Right, we might be able to carve something out for spoken word. Right. Music or whatever. Yes. But a lot of times, you know, towns will do them for the inside because you may have residential above or whatever else. And so there's always concerns when there's amplification. Okay. All right, any other questions?
Is it tickets or first come for serve or?
No, we're going to have to do tickets just so that we can limit the numbers in the space. Even without the COVID restrictions, we're, you know, we're not a big spot.
Right.
I think our county permit only allows us 40. And we haven't gotten to that point yet, but we are going to, you know, post something to register and buy tickets in advance.
Sounds interesting.
So are you going to have a rain date if we're still in mitigation at that time?
No, I think so. I think we're going to, we'll go for what just look smaller numbers.
Okay. There a motion?
I'll motion it.
Second. Okay, moved by trustee Ham, seconded by trustee Maravka to approve the amplifier permit.
Ham?
Yes.
Maravka?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Sluse?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good luck. Okay, next item B quote for AB updates in our meeting room. We talked a little bit about this a couple meetings ago, or at least at the ALC meeting, I should say. We, since, you know, the virus and we've got to videotape everything, it's really been, you know, shows how deficient our audiovisual system is. And I'd like to bring us up to, you know, a current system. This system was kind of cobbled together back in the 90s and I think maybe updated a little bit a few years ago, but we went out and got some estimates. Amy spoke with this company here, Sounds Cool by video. They were referred to us from the church, this Cornerstone church. Anyway, they've done a lot of video meeting rooms in churches and stuff like that, so they have the expertise to do this. This quote would include the camera and the, you know, control so Amy can turn it on and off from here. She doesn't have to go up and do that. And also it would include the audio so that we would be able to record these meetings legibly. And also Amy will be able... they'll all be recorded on her computer so she can just upload it, you know, Facebook or YouTube or whatever we do automatically. So I think it'll be a nice upgrade for the system, upgrade for the residents who want to, you know, actually look, view these meetings, and they'll be actually be able to hear what's going on as well. So the total cost of this quote was about $6,059.7143. So questions on that at all?
What money would we use for this? Where would it come from?
So we've got in the budget, there is some funds to improve the village hall, is that the capital improvements, Marcy, or, right?
Where would the money?
Are you taking it from capital improvement fund or are you taking it from the general I mean, there's two spots where you can...
Yeah, so either spot, absolutely, you know.
We have enough money in there for that?
Any other questions?
Did you say there were other quotes?
We talked to other people. We didn't get an actual number from them because they didn't seem, you know, it's kind of a specialized field. You know, we talked to people that would, could hook up TVs and stuff, but the audiovisual was, this was the only one that we had confidence in and actually getting a quote. Any other questions?
Let's hope soon.
Yeah, let's hope soon. So is there a motion to approve this?
Motion.
Second.
Moved by trustee Jones, seconded by trustee Sluse.
Jones?
Yes.
Sluse?
Yes.
Maravka? Parker? Ham? We got three yes and two no.
So the mayor is entitled to vote in their case? So I don't have a... well, the other thing that we want to do in here is actually put up monitors so that whatever we have on Amy's computer that we can project on there. And so just make it easier for all of us and for people who are here to see what's going on, you know, if you wanted to... going on, you know, if you wanted to display maps or documents, it would just make things a whole lot easier. So that, I don't have a quote on, just to give you guys a general idea of what that would cost. 75-inch, you know, monitors, one up in that corner and one in the back. Those are about $800 apiece. And with, you know, mounting hardware and some electrical, you know, we're probably looking at about, you know, keeping it under 2,000. So I'll bring that to the next meeting and we can talk about that as well. Okay. Item C is a logo contest. So this is something that I've been, we've been talking about this, at least a few of us, for quite a few years on, we need to get a consistent logo. I don't think we've ever really had a, like official board approved logo. And so if you notice logos that are on the police cars or on our stationery and, you know, other stuff, everyone's a little different. So I'd like to get us to approve an official one and then get all the, you know, computer files so that when anybody needs to update something, you know, we'll have the files available. So I'm not proposing that we need to go out and change everything that we have, but as we order stuff or get new stuff, that we'll have, we'll have those on there. So anyway, I had, you know, I ran a design contest online and, you know, came up with some different ideas. Some of you voted on it. The one that seemed to get the most votes was this number 6D61 here. The one that kind of was in second place was, you know, kind of the old traditional mill one, which was, you know, number two. So kind of the reason I kind of started this, I want to give us kind of an updated, more modern logo and maybe, you know, still keep the mill in there somehow. So that's kind of how we came up with some of those designs. So any thoughts or questions on that at all?
I kind of like the number two, the old school kind, because it has our established date on there and that looks like our mill. The other one, it's very nice, it's very modern, but that doesn't look like our mill. Looks like one from Holland. I mean, I know this one's from Holland too, but German Holland. I just like that, that old school.
Right, yeah. It was better. The Design 66 was more of a stylized one and I tried to, tried to get them to do something with transportation with, because we, you know, we have some major routes that go through the town, so they come up with, you know, that's kind of a road that's going up to that mill. So that's kind of why that looks so different. I mean, we could, we could certainly tweak, we can kind of tweak the logo. Once we kind of pick one that we kind of like, then we can kind of tweak that before we get, you know, the final design, so.
Do you think the mill will ever have sales on it again?
They're stacked up behind it.
Yeah.
They tried it the one year, but they didn't have them, so they rotated and we had a big storm come through and they almost ripped the top of the mill off because they had them attached so they didn't spin. So that's why they took them down. Because they had, they had been down for years and years and years and they put them up, probably, I don't know, how long ago was that, like 20 years maybe? 20 years ago, 30 years ago? I remember them, they had them up and then they had them attached somehow and we had a huge wind and they couldn't spin and they started like, almost tearing the mill down.
I think it collapsed.
Yeah, it was doing something.
There's a guy named Louis Vervich, they came here from Holland. He looked at it and he said, those were all entirely wrong. It would have made us spin.
Yeah.
The sails were wrong.
Because they didn't move, they didn't rotate like they were supposed to.
Were they too heavy or something?
They just were attached, like they just attached them somehow so they wouldn't rotate, like.
Just to be on there.
Yeah, just so we'd have the look of the mill, but they didn't do anything except for almost damage the whole mill. So if they got, if we got somebody in here to fix it and make it rotate or even do like a lighter version of it, that'd be kind of nice. Be kind of cool to do.
Suggestion years ago was that we have those window portions fabricated and then have them hooked up to an electric motor. And so it would be more like a lawnmower. To put it back to make it a farm machine, it's really not feasible. And that they would maintain the same speed, you know, all the time and they could rotate. It still costs quite a bit, but it would be nice.
I think it's somewhat humorous though to have a windmill and there's no sales on the one that we have. You know, people coming to town, want to take a look at it.
Right.
Oh, that's, that's it.
Yeah.
That was my comment as well. If we're gonna make a logo, maybe, you know, we don't have sales on the, on the mill, maybe it's time to detach ourselves from that concept or idea.
Yeah.
But. That would be fine with me. I like the mill. I mean, I think it's cool with sales on it.
Because what else are we known for?
Yeah.
The airport, that hopefully it'll never come.
Dr. Mart, I have a question.
Yeah.
So going to different communities, they have a village flag. We kind of don't have that.
Right.
Is that something we can incorporate possibly into?
Yeah, well, I mean, if you, you know, you could just take any of these logos and just put it on a flag. I mean, I think that would be great. I mean, yeah, but I don't see any reason why we couldn't do that. And I'd like to get, you know, whatever we pick, I'd like to get, you know, a big decal or, you know, those, like those, I don't know, they call those fat head things, you know, on the back wall here, you know, framing our meeting. So I think that would look nice, too. So what do you guys think?
It's a good deal.
Yeah.
And eventually, too, you could also get like car stickers, you know, people go through different places and they sell the little car stickers.
Okay. Well, I guess the question is, do you want, you just want this Amy and staff and myself to come up with something that, I mean, could any of these, that number, you know, number two or this 66 or, you know, I guess, before we give a final approval, of course, we bring it here, but, you know.
I kind of like 63 because it kind of downplayed, you know, I mean, it shows the sales, but.
Yeah. Any other comments on that? That was the one I liked, too, I think. Yeah. Right.
I'm good with 63.
Okay. All right, well, we'll, we'll kind of take that advice and kind of tweak it and I'll bring it back, bring it back to the board and go from there, okay? All right, item D, historical documents library for inventory. So we've got a lot of items in the cabinet here that we talked to the library about possibly take a look at, maybe digitizing some of the documents and preserving them. And so I guess there may be a grant available. Do you want to speak to that at all, Noreen?
There is an ALA, which is Library Association Grant for Small and Rural Libraries that involve community activities, such as the village sharing something with the library. And they're doing two sets of awards, one in December and another one in February for $3,000. First one they're giving to 200 libraries, the second one is for 450 libraries. So there's a chance that we can work to get the project digitized and then do actual program on the history of the documents and where they came from. Like you mentioned, there were birth certificates and death certificates and all different kinds of documents that we have no idea what's in there in the safe.
Right.
So if we do an inventory of it and then apply to the grant, we might be able to get the whole thing digitized and then save some money while doing it.
So she's talking about there was, there's a safe in the Public Works old wellhouse number one, right, Bob?
Right.
That's got some documents in there that, you know, are from a long time ago.
1800s.
1800s. So I don't know, can, can we have a library look at those and inventory them and digitize them? Is there any legal statute or how does that all work? Right, a couple things. So I know the clerk had expressed some concern about the fact that, you know, she is the keeper of, of the papers and that's a statutory obligation. Right. Is the clerk, you know, keeps all the papers belonging to the village. And there's also something called the State Archives Act and the Local Records Act that I think we would want to look at in terms of how this would all work. That being said, I think if, you know, if the board wants to know what's in there and have them indexed and digitized, I think that's all very reasonable, subject to kind of making sure that we're double checking, we're complying with those acts, that the clerk is comfortable with the procedures that are going to be used. Presumably if they're digitized, all the originals are going to come back to your custody at some point, but we want to make sure that we know what's going out and that the library's taking care of them. So we might want to just kind of work through a few of those details. Okay.
Do we have a historical society in Peatown? Anybody that, or do we rely on the library a lot for historical stuff?
We have a local history genealogy room.
Okay.
We have a lot of documents and a lot of microfilm that we're looking into getting digitized now.
Okay.
Like we have, you know, the dead back to the beginning of time. So I'm told, oh, we have records from the funeral home in town, too. So we're, we're kind of getting all that done, so it would be, you know, part of, part of the project.
And it'd all be kept in like one spot? That's, that's nice. It's kept in one spot? Like if other people had, like, people had questions about family history or whatever, you know, people are always looking into like, who lived in my house 100 years ago or?
We're always getting emails saying, you know, so and so passed away, you know, in Peatown, what can you tell me? So we have a very good adults department that takes care of that.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
So Donna, do you want to, you know, what's your concerns? I mean, what, how can we address the concerns about those, especially those documents that are in that safe there?
Birth certificates and death certificates should not be out there for the public to begin with, in my opinion. There are old minutebooks back there. There are a lot of documents as far as the history of the village. And that room is the safest place in this building for those things to be.
Okay.
They're in a great big double walled safe locked in a concrete or building, whatever you call those, concrete block building.
Okay.
That is the safest place in this building, as opposed to where I have to keep the rest of my documents.
Right.
In the basement that floats.
Right. So could the library come here and at least inventory that stuff? Would you be comfortable with that?
I'd be happy to talk with Noreen if she'd like to come in and talk to me and we'll see.
Okay, we can do that.
See how you can work it out. Because I, I think it, like I said, making some of that stuff available that we can, you know, I think is good for the public and it's good for everybody to know what we have there, I think, as well, right? I mean, does, does anybody know exactly what's in that safe?
I know, I don't know every document, no, but I have a general idea. I inherited it from the 1800s, that was before my gun.
Yeah, okay.
But I know it's safe there.
Okay. So Noreen, maybe you can get together with Donna and you guys can figure out where to go from here, okay?
Thank you.
Is it locked now, the safe? It didn't seem to be functional when I saw it, I guess.
You can't lock it.
The combination, that was back probably when this building was the mercantile. That was probably the safe that belonged there. And so the combination's been locked, but it's double walled, so it's not like, and the room is also locked because that's the chlorine room. So nobody can get in that room to begin with.
Okay. So, all right, so you guys, you okay with getting together with her and you guys can work it out?
I will speak with Noreen.
Okay, perfect. All right. Next item is the planning zoning case PZ20P03 rezoning of 433 West Wood Street from B1 to R3. So Amy, why don't you go ahead and get her particulars?
So that was, it's actually from B2, it's currently zone B2. And petitioner requested that it be rezoned to a R3, one family residence district. It's surrounded by other residents. We had a public hearing on October 21st at P and Z and they brought forth a recommendation to this board for approval for that rezoning with a roll call vote of five yeses and two absents.
Questions at all?
It complies with the comprehensive plan and would not, the rezoning would not create a non-conforming lot.
There's no questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve the planning commission's recommendation.
Motion.
Second.
Been moved by trustee Jones, second by trustee Sluse. And this would be ordinance 20-11.
Jones?
Yes.
Sluse?
Yes.
Maravka?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Hamm?
Yes. All right. Next is surplus vehicle bid opening. Open a sealed bid, so we got those? Here, do you want to open some of them?
Oh, my goodness. I got the van.
So this is light power. We have a bid for $750. One's for $185. One for $100. And one for $668. And the last one is for $300. So the high bid there was for $750 by Mike Screwbar on behalf of the Will County Fair. So how do we work this? We just, do we have to approve each one separately or? Well, there's one ordinance for all, so I think we'll just kind of, why don't you set aside the winner for each and we'll kind of reiterate them at the time you approve the ordinance. Okay.
And the van, we have.
Yeah, I'll read them. So I'll open them. Okay, so the van, 2005 Chevy van, $725. And is that $1,150 or is that $150?
I, I read it as $150. I, I read it as $150. A hundred and fifty.
Yeah.
Dollars.
I don't know, what, did you look it up?
Passing around, don't dare look at it. The secret vote to see who it is.
I read that as $150 with the double line, two yes.
Okay, all right.
Because the one has the line on the bottom and the.
Yeah, all right. So $725, Thomas Hagmaster.
Who was it?
Thomas Hagmaster. All right, what is this? This is the 2011 Chevy Impala. We got bid for $200 and one for $120. So again, that's Thomas Hagmaster.
How much were they again?
$200 and $120.
This is the Crown Vic.
Okay, we got one for $300. And one for $220. And one for $500. So the winning one was...
Maybe on the front?
The first name is, Ormiston is the last name. O-R-M-I-S-T-O-N. Can you read that first name or is it?
We have a person who put bids for everything on one.
Oh, okay.
So we'll have to recheck.
Here, yeah, I don't know.
Charlie.
Charlie?
Charles.
Charles. All right, so we've, so Donna, you'll have to, so the 2011 Chevy Impala, $503. That's higher, okay. That's Julio Crispin. The light towers, $553, that's lower. The Crown Vic, $703. Higher. What was the other one? The 2005 Chevy van, $703, so that's lower. So next is.
Dodge Ram.
The Dodge pickup truck. We've got $300, $600, $150. And this one is $703, so that's Julio Crispin. Is that it?
So also, in any case where the board decides that, you know, the bids aren't what you hoped for or adequate or you're not getting good value, you're free to reject and come up with a new game plan.
Okay. What do you think, Bob?
I do have a question though, if you might.
Yeah.
So in the end, the bids were supposed to be individual sealed. Is that a problem with that one?
Uh, yes. I, I mean, I haven't seen the listing of, you know, what you specified. But typically if we say individual sealed bids for each item, that's, we would want that. Now, that doesn't mean that you couldn't waive the bid process in this particular case and award it to them. But to the extent that you want to take that into account, you could. All right, so Donna, you want to read back the winning bids on for each one?
Thomas Hagmeister on the Chevy van, $725. Light tower, Mike Screwbar, $750. Impala was Crispin at $503. The Crown Vic was Crispin at $703. And the Dodge pickup was Crispin at $703. If I heard all the ones that you called up.
Yeah, I think that's it.
And so who was the individual that put them all on one?
This Crispin. Okay.
So can we approve that? How would you word that, just so we don't get in trouble?
Let me look at the ordinance here.
When they say an individual bid, even though they're listed on a sheet of paper, those would be individual bids, wouldn't say that a single of the bids in the whole file.
Well, it's saying bid should be in a sealed envelope clearly marked for vehicle which is being bid. So I think that's where their same issue is. Each item is to be bid separately, so we did meet that second requirement, but not the individual.
But what harm is it doing the citizens' taxpayers' money if we accept the higher bid?
Right, correct. So you're, you know, finding essentially it's in the best interest of the village to... On the particular ones where Mr. Crispin bid to waive competitive bidding and award them to him.
Okay.
Based on his offer.
Okay. Does that make sense to everybody?
Yep.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the high bidders and in a case where it's Mr. Crispin to waive competitive bidding.
And also to approve this ordinance to open bids.
Oh, okay, there you go. Motion. Then moved by trustee Ham, second by trustee Jones.
Do you want to get that ordinance?
Oh, I'm sorry, ordinance, this is 2012. Oh, no.
Great, Ham?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Morevka?
Yes.
Sluse?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Jones. Oops, Ham.
I made the motion.
Jones, Sluse, Parker and Ham. Okay, then I have everybody.
Okay.
Oh, yes.
Okay, moving on. G, ordinance, the Comcast cable franchise. This was on the agenda last, last meeting, but we tabled it to see if we could get some free cable. But we were not able to negotiate that, so the ordinance is, oh, we need to approve the cable franchise.
Almost here.
Second.
Then moved by trustee Morevka, second by trustee Sluse. And this would be ordinance 20-13.
Morevka?
Yes.
Sluse?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
All right, there's no press here. Just a couple of things I have. So we are applying for the ITUP grant for the Wilmington Road Pathway or Walkway, whatever you want to call it. If we do not get that grant, I want to have kind of a Plan B in place that, I want to know how much it would cost for us to just put a limestone path out there. And so Troy's given us some specifications. They don't deal with limestone paths, so he recommended we talk to the Will County Forest Preserve. They should be able to give us an estimate on, you know, what that would cost. And we would build it so that if we were able to get a grant in the future, you know, they could pave over the top of it, you know, and that would be, so anyway.